Open the meeting now. I'd like to call the order. The Hopkinton Town Council meeting of July 6, 2021 to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Who, yeah, America. All right, up first is the consent agenda. I'd like to approve the town council meeting minutes of June 21, 2021. Ratify and approve the 16th Local Declaration of Emergency from July 6, 2021 to July 23, 2021. Do I have a motion? Yes, Sharon.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Marvel here, I second.
All in favor?
Before you vote, may I speak?
Yes, yes, hold on one second, point of order. Yes, go ahead, Lisa.
The consent agenda states that it's until July 23. I received the declaration of local emergency that says that it will extend through August 2nd. So if we could get clarification from Brian perhaps?
Yep, so I think we need to extend it till July 23rd. So I'll revise that, Lisa.
Okay, all right.
Because generally we do it to the next council meeting. So I wasn't quite sure how that would be handled if it ran out on the 23rd. Or if they extended it past the 23rd, how we would handle that when we wouldn't have a council meeting. So originally I thought to extend it to the next council meeting, so that way we were covered. But it doesn't sound like they're going to extend it past July 23rd. So I think we should revise our local declaration to match the Rhode Island General Law or the Executive Order 2172.
All right, so it's correct on the consent agenda?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, all right, with that said, there was a motion to approve and there was a second to approve. All in favor?
First, I.
Gary, I.
Marvel, I.
David, I.
And Moffett, I. And the motion passes. Okay, up next in old business is Potter Hill Dam. Discuss and consider sending letter to Town of Wesley for in-person meeting in response to the Potter Hill Dam. Anyone want to start this discussion?
Yeah, I'll start. I've been going to a few of the meetings and a meeting tonight. I went to the last one. I think we should send a letter and ask for some dates and then we can probably consider our next meeting. The first meeting in August when we can meet in person. I know some of the council people from Wesley and some from Hopkins and we did to the Potter Hill Mill site. And worse comes to worse, we could do a virtual meeting, which I prefer we don't. But I would, at this point, sending a letter and I would like to make a motion that we send a letter to the Wesley Town Council and ask them for what dates are convenient for them so we can, and also noting when our meeting nights are and which is the first and third Mondays and try to come up with consensus on the best date. So I make that a motion that we contact the Wesley Town Council and ask them come up with some dates that would be convenient for them so we can have some input and come back with some dates. Thank you, I make that a motion.
Okay, Scott's made a motion, but just a little discussion possibly here, Scott. So I mean, we, before sending a letter, I would maybe if we could kind of come up with a, what's the word? Kind of like.
Include in the letter, I will add if there's no.
Because it's kind of vague, you know, I mean, because, I mean, and I'm not being, what do you call, I just want to make sure it's a productive meeting and.
Well, the thing is, I would redraw my motion and I don't know who was seconding, but I make a motion that we send a letter to Wesley Town Council, ask them to suggest dates for a mutual meeting and possible agenda items so we can have a productive meeting. I make that a motion.
Is there a second to Councilor Hurst?
Gary seconds it. Think it's a good idea, we all sit down, get on the same sheet of music.
Sure, you know, and before we vote, yes, Sharon.
Okay, number one, you know that I, 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 number one, I do not think that we are going to be very successful with this whole situation. Number two, I think we need to have to know from Numa, is it Numa? The people have given them the Noah, who was giving them the grant. I think we need input from that person direct because either they're going, that person has to be open to either having that grant amended or increased or there has to be some way to include Hopkinton.
Well, I, can I address that, Mr. President? I.
They asked, I'm not finished. They asked for money to do their, do the dam their way. This is what Wesley has asked for. And they build it as if they were going to reclaim the land. And this is going to be all wonderful for the plants and wonderful for the animals. Has absolutely no thought to Hopkinton's residents that will be having their wells go down. So I, I, I think we need to make sure that whoever gave them the grant, we need to have a representative there to hear us direct.
So Sharon, what I'm hearing you say is that if we're going to request a meeting, we need to request a meeting, A, not with just the Wesley Town Council and B, we need all parties involved.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, we need all parties to be involved, you know, and I would like it to, to kind of be, you know, I mean, we did form this committee and hopefully, you know, they're flushing out a lot of information, gathering information soon. I'm sure with their dialogue and their, their research and discussions that they're going to be probably ahead of most of us as far as, you know, what the whole situation entails. So, you know, I think that's a meeting that we would also have to, you know, potentially include our information committee on also and not this, and not, and obviously not allow them to be in.
I think that we need to realize that some members of Wesley Town Council, it's five in Hopkinton and then count the town managers and other stakeholders is a term that people like to use and that's quite a few people. If we had a meeting as a unified voice and talk to the so-called specialists or the government agencies on the state or federal level, we have to deal with because we're dealing just with, what, 12 members of while the council people show up and that count and managers and everything else. And we could have a meeting with 20 people. It's best to get a feel of where we want to go and then we could talk to the council president or whoever you choose to, to talk to these, the people from the state or the federal government. Otherwise, you're going to have a mob scene potentially and everybody is trying to talk without any direction. If we got a feel for how the town councils in the two towns felt, it would probably reduce, I guess, repetition and have a common theme that we could agree on. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I just, I just don't want to get ahead of this committee that we spent a little bit of time forming and getting together. I just don't want them to feel like, you know, we're kind of going over them and stepping on their toes, you know, because they've all, I mean, they all, you know, rushed right up to volunteer to participate, you know, to take time, you know, to, to, to address this concern. So I just, again, you know, sending, yes, Sharon.
Then should we wait a little bit until the committee is ready to give us their report before we meet with?
We could. What I was thinking is I do like a letter to the Wesley Town Council from, from the Hopkinton Town Council. I like Scott's idea, at least letting them know that we would enter, we are, we would like to have something down the road, find a date, you know, and kind of, you know, just let them become aware that we, you know, officially, we want to.
You want me to withdraw my motion?
If, I mean, Scott, I have no problem with writing, with us sending a letter, letting them know that we would like to have a, a meeting in the future and we could flush out some dates for them. But I don't think, you know, if in two weeks, that's a great time for them that we do that without, without really maybe bringing in our information committee to our next meeting and maybe allowing them to report to us at that meeting with their findings.
Bottom line is, I think time is of the essence. It's July, by the time we get anything done, it could be October, the way government works, and I think we need to move. And there's no saying that we can't take the information, but we should at least get a feel on how the Wesley Council feels, whether they want to take the dam down or whatever. But I think there's a lot of people who are property owners, they're people concerned about their wells and you need to get a feel on the elected leaders of Wesley and of course, usually the state and the federal government pretty much do what they want to do. So I think time is of the essence, but when, when we actually vote on the motion, just tell me what I'm voting on. Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
Oh, this, I can't remember where it is, but there's been an article that says that, that, whoever, who owns the dam or whatever, it's in receivership, it actually is Carapaz's land, part of it. And it's in receivership and that is why the town has, has control of it. It's, they call it a mastership. And the town doesn't necessarily want to spend any money on repairing that dam. I don't think, but I mean, that's why they applied for this grant to begin with. So I don't, I mean, I think we know how they feel, but at any rate, just letting you know.
So I'm going to offer this out to the council in discussion of this letter and just maybe some feedback on it.
Mr. President, I'm not a complete expert on this, but I do have an interest in the subject. And my question is this, with all this public works infrastructure they're talking about from Washington, is any of that can be tapped? Have we been, they've been in contact with Senator Whitehouse or Senator Reed or Jim Landjevin on any possible federal help we can have or is that a potential thing? We have people who are concerned about their wells, we have people concerned about their property values in other, in other issues. So I'm just concerned that, and some people are concerned that this is a done deal. And the town seems to like to take down dams. I know maybe the situation's a little different up in Wyoming, but they're repairing that dam. And I think that we should at least see if there's a federal possible response to this issue. I think it's important to the people in Potter Hill and the people that will be directly impacted by taking that dam down if that eventually happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So, so this is my suggestion and it would be to at our next meeting, schedule the Potter Hill Dam Information Committee to appear at our meeting, okay? And have them, let's have that discussion with them also. And then we move forward with reaching out to Wesley. In the meantime, Scott, right now, I mean, again, I mean, if, I'm assuming, and I mean, I haven't reached out to Whitehouse, Landjevin or any of those, I mean, feel free to, absolutely, 100%. But I, I think out of respect for the information committee, I think we should have them at our next meeting, have a discussion on it and how we want to, how they feel, you know, along with us, how we should approach the Town of Wesley. I do, I mean, I mean, there has to be a meeting, there has to be a meeting, but I, I want the, on this issue, that Potter Hill, the Potter Hill Dam Information Committee to be in lockstep, you know, with us.
Okay, Mr. President, I make a motion that, my motion be tabled until the next regular meeting of the Hopkinton Town Council.
Okay.
Is Counsel Gary.
I don't think there was a second to his motion.
Your counsel Gary to second it.
No, Lisa, he did, he did, Counsel Gary did second the original motion.
Okay, thank you, I did not hear that. Okay, thank you.
And then.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. So with that being said, we will reach out to the Potter Hill Dam Information Committee and ask them to be at our next meeting with, with what they've gathered and just, just, just so that we're all on the same page. I don't, you know, I don't want them, you know, I mean, I want them to obviously think that we appreciate their work and what they're doing because, because I know that I do and I, I just want them to be, to be part of this decision. So with that being said here, I see well-served, yes.
Just, just a point of order, I think we, we took a, we did a motion and seconded that, but we didn't vote on that. And I don't know if that's a necessary thing.
Yeah, all right, so, so we have a, Scott made a motion to withdraw his motion. Counsel Gary seconded his motion to withdraw. All in favor to accept the withdrawal of Scott's motion?
First, I.
Gary, I.
Marvel, I.
David, I.
And Moffett, I.
Mr. President, I'll restate my motion. I make a motion that, my, my motion, I moved that we meet with the Town Council of Wesley and I table that for discussion at the next meeting of the Hopkinton Town Council.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table that discussion?
I make a motion that we discuss setting up some type of meeting with the Wesley Town Council and any other party that we believe should be invited.
Okay.
I make that a motion.
Counsel Gary, I second that.
All favor?
Marvel, I.
Gary, I.
First, I.
David, I.
And Moffett, I. Motion passes. Under this bullet point here, I see well survey. Is there anyone with information on that well survey or should, shall we wait till? Because I know the Potter Hill Dam Information Committee is.
Yeah, I like to comment on that. I attended the last dam committee meeting and I requested this to be on the agenda. There's a concern about response, so I'm making an appeal here and I hope the press puts it in the paper, that not everybody has responded to, to this survey. So if you live in the Town of Hopkinton, please respond to the well survey. It's very important to planning and information. So if you have not responded, please do so, thank you.
I would like to add, if you've received the survey and have not responded, not, and I would like to say that not, not all residents in Hopkinton. So if you're listening, not every resident in Hopkinton received a, a well survey. Those who were deemed to be potentially affected by that situation.
I would, Mr. President, I would suggest that they call the town clerk's office or maybe the town planer. Who should we recommend, the town clerk's office?
In regards to the survey?
Yes.
I, I would, I would say they called, it would, I would assume would be, the contact person would be Gina Fuller. She, she is the one who, who sent out the well surveys. Yeah, that, that has nothing to do with the town, the town did not send those out. That was done by, I think, the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District.
Okay.
That's correct.
You have a number offhand, Lisa, for her?
I do not. The survey is posted on the website, I believe.
Yes.
I just want to expedite this thing and I thank Lisa and all concerned about trying to make this happen so we can get the information, but I implore the public to please respond to that survey so the people have the ability to have that information. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Scott. Okay, up next, we have new business. Discuss and consider Town Council Board, Town Council slash Board and Commission meetings to be held in person. This was brought on the agenda by Counselor Hurst. But Counselor Hurst, I would like to read something from the League of Cities and Towns before we discuss this. It is a, I believe we received this some in an email. Hold on one second, I'm going to pop it up and I, and I'm going to read it here. I pasted it in the bigger font. Okay, it goes here, Open Meetings Act. All right, it says, this is a guidance has changed again since last week's update. It says, legislation allowing requiring virtual meetings under the Open Meeting Act will not pass agenda seven this session. So what they're saying here is, all right, the governor's office has said that they do not currently plan to extend the executive order beyond July 23rd. We recommend that you plan to return to in-person meetings after 7/23/21. If you are scheduling hearings or meetings for matters that require a longer advertisement period, for example zoning matters, we would recommend conferring with your solicitor before scheduling. If you are unsure whether the meeting will be held in person or virtual hybrid, you can provide public notice with both scenarios. Attached is an example of one such agenda. So right here it goes. Though members of public bodies will need to meet in person after July 23rd, several municipal officials have asked whether they can maintain virtual participation in meetings by the general public once the executive order expires. In discussions with the Department of Big Business Regulation and the Attorney General's Office, we have been told that there is nothing in the current Open Meetings Act that prevents public bodies from live streaming their meetings or allowing the public to watch slash participate virtually. However, the ability to allow virtual public participation may depend on the type of meeting in any applicable state law and local ordinances. Municipal officials should work with their solicitors if they would like to continue offering verse, virtual participation for the public. If you proceed with virtual public participation is important that the experience for both in-person and virtual participation is similar or equal. And for example, that would be testimony that I was giving virtually must be audible to everyone in the public space. So I just wanted to read out loud the, the, that information from the League of Cities and Towns. So Counselor Hurst, if you want to make a comment, go ahead and we'll follow up with discussion.
The bottom line is that people have become disenfranchised from their government. In fact, the bottom line is that it's not only older people who don't necessarily get into technology as much, but this is seriously curtailed, I'm just going to say representative democracy, actually it's democracy. And people should have a right to see their officials in person. And I found it interesting, I recently went to a Choverhoe School Committee meeting and I know the Potter Hill Dam Committee has not done virtual, but the Choverhoe School Committee was a combination virtual and in-person, which I find interesting because that's a government body. I believe that public officials should face the public. And if they still want to have some type of virtual meeting, but I believe elected officials and appointed officials, unless there's a prohibition by the state, people should meet in person. That's what government's about and I think it's crucial. And a lot of people just sign into technology, so you, people because of that get disenfranchised in a sense because of, of that. So I would ask Counselor Seipol, because this is a legal issue. How can we comply with like state law and make government accessible? You know, I, I just referred to is the Choverhoe School Committee, you know, I would suspect if you come to an average Hopkinton Town Council meeting, there's more people at a school committee meeting in the audience than there would be at a Hopkinton Town Council meeting, unless it was, you know, a swearing in of a police officer or some contentious issue because basically you only have maybe a half dozen people in the audience mostly. So I'm a little concerned about if the school committee can seem to have, have a public meeting, why can't the Town Council or some of these other boards? Thank you.
Well, can I, can I say something before that, Scott? I don't think, so anyway, I mean, the, so the school committee is obviously going under what's the executive order right now. Once that executive order passes, I too believe that we, we will have in-person meetings. But with that, I would like, you know, in-person meetings and, and government officials in person, but.
I'd like to just respond to that and I don't want to argue with you, but.
I'm agreeing with you right now, Scott.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, it's good that.
I'm not arguing, all I'm saying is that, all I'm saying is that we can, I, I believe we can have in-person meetings, but also add the Zoom feature for those who are not able to attend a town council meeting because they have two children who have a soccer practice and they get home at five minutes to seven and don't have a chance to do it or don't have a babysitter to show up. It's not always, and, and again, I agree that there are older people who are techno, you know, technologically challenged, but there's also plenty of people who, who aren't and who would like to participate and who would like to see. So I think the hybrid model is fine for the public. But with elected officials, I think we should have the in-person meeting. I mean, I just, I mean, that's, you know, the way that it should go. But I still think we should offer the, this virtual format. I mean, as we sit right here, I can see Counsel Gary, I can see Counselor Hurst. This is the same view that you see when we're watching or if you review a meeting on, on, on our YouTube link to watch a, to watch a past town council meeting. So I, I really don't see why we can't have, have it both ways for the public. You know what I mean? I think, I think that opens the door for many, many more people to be able to, you know, to attend a meeting live.
Just want to say that since most of our tax dollars do go to Choverhoe, I'm a little concerned about the superintendent's suggestion that meetings go back to virtual because of the mask situation.
Right, but right now we're talking about the Town Council and our boards, we're not talking about the school committee, that's, I mean.
I just think it's relevant because it takes most of our tax dollars, thank you.
Oh, no, I will agree they take most of our tax dollars, that is for sure.
I, I've said all, I've said all I'm going to, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Marvel, here, I, can I just, so I want to agree that the hybrid model, I think, is, is going to be the best approach for us going forward. And, and I think it actually is the best way to open up government participation to the largest number of residents by allowing people to dial in remotely and listen in or, and/or participate when they can't make it to a meeting. You know, Steve's mentioned a couple of instances or a couple of use cases. You know, we may have housebound people who was only linked to the outside is, is a computer. We may have people who are unvaccinated and don't want to wear masks. So, you know, we, we have to, we have to address, you know, when we're going back to in-person meetings, how are we going to address, you know, vaccination, you know, mask wearing versus not? You know, the other use case is, you know, the Town Council chambers is actually quite small. And, you know, we would never be able to fit a large number of, or a large percentage of our residents in the council chamber. So there's, there's a lot of reasons why we, we should go to the hybrid. But I, but I also agree that we as a council should be there in person.
Steve?
Yes, Sharon.
Yeah, I agree that the council members need to be in person. But I, I also want to know what's going to be the protocol. Are we all going to wear masks even if we are vaccinated? Is everyone in that, in the, that has to, if that physically comes to the town hall, supposed to wear masks? supposed to wear masks? The reason I'm asking this is I work part-time for New England Airlines and they have, they require that their passengers wear masks on their airplanes because they only have, you know, six or eight passenger airplanes. And they have to wear a mask while they're in the waiting room. So, but their seats are, you know, right next to each other. I mean, there's no distancing. So they, they all have to wear a mask and I, I want to know is that what we're going to require?
Well, I think we should have that discussion. I mean, if we're going to discuss, you know, you know, protocols and we're gonna, I mean, we can't ignore that. We are, you know, still in a situation where, you know, there are, you know, like you said, there, there are people who aren't vaccinated. There are people, obviously, you know, I don't go around asking people if they're vaccinated or not. I mean, I would hope if, if somebody wasn't, you know, that they would just, you know, respectfully wear it in concern for potential, you know, other people. So to kind of answer that, I mean, I don't even know where to begin with that. I mean, do we, as a council decide on a protocol? Yes, go ahead, Council Gary.
Steve, I mean, the state is already, the state has already put out the guidelines for town manager updates. You know, it's just like anything, if you don't feel good about it, don't come. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. Okay, it's already been set up. I appreciate.
I don't know. I don't know what it is. Because I go grocery shopping to the Stop and Shop in Wyoming and they have the sign out front saying, we strongly encourage you to wear a mask. And half the people in there and half the staff in there do not wear masks and other people do. So I just want to know what, what we're going to require.
It is optional. Masks are optional now as per the state guidelines. Brian, can you jump in on this? Is there anything you have to say?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just waiting for an opportunity to speak. Well, I think, yes, we would have followed the Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. I think that's the, the best guidance we can get. I did want to take a step back and kind of address the whole hybrid model. This has kind of been in the works for a while. There was a bill that was proposed in both the Senate and the House for, to allow hybrid meetings. And I believe I sent an email out to the council about it last week. The, the bill didn't pass. However, prior to that bill not passing, everybody in the state on our municipal leaders meetings was under the impression that we were going to go to a hybrid format. So what we did was we spent, the IT Director Jeff Fernet, myself, we started getting quotes and bringing in vendors because we don't have the technology at the town hall to, to hold a hybrid meeting. And neither to any of the other cities and towns in the state. So we've gotten quotes from various vendors. But because every municipality in the state is trying to, to implement this hybrid technology, they're backed up, you know, months. So it, you know, it was something we've been on for, for a while now, but it's, it's not something that can happen overnight. The, the problem is, like they said in, in their correspondence, if you proceed with virtual public participation, it's important that the experience for both in-person and virtual participants is similar or equal. And the testimony given on virtual meeting must be audible. So I'm gonna have to spend some time with IT because I don't, I'm not confident that we have the technology to do that. So if someone's at home speaking through Zoom, do we, do we have the, the ability to make that audio in the, the town council chambers be heard by everyone that's there in person and vice versa?
Brian, can I just interject for one second?
Sure.
So, I mean, there are, you know, speaker, you know, computer speakers. I mean, we could set up computer speakers. I mean, I, I mean, to me, I mean, I completely understand what you're saying. But at, at this moment, right now, if there were people in the crowd there, we could still have a, a meeting and still see the computer screen, still see the people. I mean, that's kind of, that's my idea of, of a hybrid meeting. I mean, I, I'm not sure if, like what other technology?
Yeah, we, I mean, we have to, we probably have to get some more guidance and, and I think we're not alone there. Everybody's kind of trying to figure out exactly what the expectations are. But if there is someone in the public that's speaking at this point, there's no way for the people at home to hear that. So if they're at the podium speaking into the microphone, yeah, those speakers can be channeled through the council chambers. But if they can't, they're not going to go into the computer and, and relay it through Zoom. You need, you need technology to do that.
Okay.
So, so we're working on it and, you know, maybe there's some workarounds that we can do. But, you know, everybody's in the states trying to get their systems upgraded so that they can host these hybrid meetings. You know, and the fortunate for us, the expense can be covered by the, the American Rescue Funds, which we've gotten cleared, you know, we've, we've checked on that. So we do have the funding to do it. Again, it's just these vendors are so backed up that it took them three weeks to get us quotes. So, you know, I'm not optimistic that they're going to be able to get this actually done overnight. But again, I'll work with Jeff Fernet, the IT Director, and try to get some workarounds. Because I understand what you're saying, Council President, like as far as like people, you could easily plug a speaker into the side of the laptop. So the people there in, in the council chambers could hear what's being said on Zoom. But I think it's the other scenario that we have to really try to figure out. Whereas if people are in person, how are the people at home?
Sure. You know, I mean, so, so, I mean, this, this may be a suggestion. I, I don't know if, you know, we set up a Zoom link and we do a dry run somehow, some way to kind of see what the, the sound is like in that town hall. Because I mean, when Council Hurst, and, and again, Brian, I completely, I'm not trying to fight. I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, find a solution in the meantime. You know, so we can, so we don't have to delay any of it, you know, until we're, you know, fully equipped with completely, you know, the technology to just make it flawless, you know? You know, I can, I can, I can hear Councilor Hurst when he's sitting back there talking. So I'm assuming if someone's, you know, speaking into a microphone, we, we probably could. But again, I'm assuming, so unless we, you know, maybe had a dry run on it and we could kind of see how that worked. But that's just a suggestion, Brian. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I, I 100% appreciate the work you and Jeff are doing, working on this, getting us the proper technology because, I mean, that's what we should have. If this is going to be something that we officially move forward doing, we should, we should have the necessary equipment to make sure that is absolutely 100%.
Hey, hey, Brian, it's Mike. If you, I'm sure you've been, most of us have been in Wesley Town Hall. When you're sitting in the chambers, you know, you're looking at town council, kind of like what we do. Up on the, if you're looking at the chambers, we're sitting down, looking straight at the chambers. On the right-hand side, there is a pretty big, pretty big screen. I wouldn't know a screen or maybe a flat screen. Oh, I'm saying wrong. And it actually shows what council is talking and they filter some of that stuff through. And I could be a harm saying wrong, but I've been there enough to see that the public can actually look and see the council or hear through that. It's a very, you know, it's, it's a pretty big, pretty big, uh, pretty big town hall in that area right there. But maybe we could do something like that. I don't know. I'm sure it's a challenge.
Yeah, like what, what you're describing is, is basically a hybrid system. So that's what they all, we've had three companies come in and give us quotes and they, they're going to put monitors in the town hall chambers with three cameras pointing at two at the council, one at the podium. And then there's a whole soundboard that everything goes, you know, all the, the microphones will go into. Again, I'm not an IT guy, but just from what I've gathered from the meetings with the vendors and talking to Jeff, I, I don't know that we're 100% there. I mean, like, I'm hoping we can find a workaround because I do see the value of having people attend virtually. And I, I hope that we can transition to that with, you know, pretty seamlessly. But I just can't 100% guarantee that we have the technology. But I can report back to you once I've sat down with Jeff and, and we can kind of maybe play around with what we have and see, see if there's something we can do with, you know, even if we have to make some emergency procurements and get some things in-house just to hold us over until we get the, the full-on hybrid system installed.
Excellent. That's, Brian, that's much appreciated. And I, and, and I just want to add, I mean, once we go back to, to in-person meetings, I mean, the hybrid model in, in the virtual seems like it's, it's an option, you know, it's not going to be required, obviously. So, so, I mean, you know, if we, you know, want to like, you know, simulcast it kind of, you know, I mean, we can simulcast it on Zoom. I mean, that, that shouldn't be a problem. You know what I mean? At least, you know, maybe if there's a, you know, and, but I would be, I would be willing to, to, you know, potentially do just, just, just a dry run, you know what I mean? Just to kind of, you know, see, you know, without having a meeting, you know, just kind of have a dry run just to see what it's like, you know what I mean? If, if I'm just spending, you know, spinning my wheels with this idea or not. But I'm glad to hear that you're already on it, trying to work on getting us set up to, to be able to, to produce this type of hybrid model, which I think will absolutely 100% increase participation in, in all boards and commissions and town council meetings.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, no problem, guys. I'll keep you posted. Like I said, I'll meet with IT and I'll shoot out an email this week and kind of let you know what, what our options are. And then as Council President suggested, if, if we can do it, we'll do a dry run with the council members.
Right. And, and, and also, Brian, I mean, I'm not sure, again, if, if there's anyone who we can reach out other towns or however, if we could find out how they, if they're already doing in-person meetings, how they're going to, what, knowing that the, and, and again, I'm sure maybe the League of Cities and Towns is going to offer some sort of advices, you know, moving forward as to, again, I know masks are optional and all this other stuff, but we as a council, I mean, and, and again, with the, you know, with the smaller quarters and that, that we do have at, at the town hall, you know, there may be people who are discouraged in showing up in person because they, they're not vaccinated. And, you know, they don't want to roll the dice with somebody that maybe isn't vaccinated and is going to choose not to wear a mask because that's how they feel about it. You know what I mean? So it's, it's, it's the world we live in today. But I, I just want to make sure that we are addressing concerns of all residents. Residents who are also concerned that masks should be worn and those who feel that their rights are potentially being violated by having to wear a mask. It is a two-way street and I think we need to definitely figure out a happy medium on this that is going to keep people healthy and, and not concerned or, or anxious about showing up. So, so I would say, I mean, obviously after 23rd, we do have another town council meeting. Before then, we can continue that discussion till then. Maybe in the meantime, come up with some framework for, for possible suggestions as to how we're going to handle the in-person meeting. And then have that discussion at our next town council meeting and come up with maybe a protocol for that. If, if anybody doesn't think that's a good idea, speak now. And if they do, then we can discuss that also. But that's just my two cents.
Council Marvel here, I just want to add something. I think that at the very least, whatever our protocol includes with regard to the public, I think that we should have, as we are going to be in close proximity, us five plus Attorney Scipole, I'm assuming, plus Lisa, Brian, I, I think we should, you know, for ourselves, for our benefit, we should have some sort of a verification that we are all vaccinated because I'm assuming that we will not be wearing masks because we will have to speak and discuss items. So I, I think that we should all, you know, provide verification to either Brian or to Lisa that we have all been vaccinated.
I think that's.
I kind of disagree with that. That's kind of private information. If you're vaccinated, good. You're not, that's bad. That's up to you. That shouldn't stop us from what we're doing.
Okay, so I just have one question just in response to that, Mike. So if, do you, so if a person is not vaccinated, should they be mingling, like responsibly mingling around people who aren't vaccinated or who aren't vaccinated and have a mask and all that other stuff? I'm just, just.
Steve, I'm not going to get into the debate about with you. Here's my feeling. If you're vaccinated, there you go. If you're not vaccinated, there you go. You want to wear a mask, wear a mask.
So I'll follow it up with, that I would hope someone who wasn't vaccinated would, would be responsible in that aspect, that they would choose to do the right thing.
I agree. But going and telling the town manager or the town clerk, if you are, you are, isn't their business.
It's, it's, it's something that should be done for the benefit of the folks around you.
I agree with Bob Marvel.
I don't.
Okay.
Nobody's business if you're vaccinated or not.
So, so what that implies to me is that you're not vaccinated and you're not willing to tell me that you're not vaccinated.
I wouldn't tell you if I was or I wasn't.
So, so you're potentially putting those around you at risk.
It's irregardless, Bob. You know what I'm talking about.
No, it's not.
Well, you can stay on Zoom the rest of the time you're on town council then.
Well, I would hope that if me potentially not being vaccinated, that if you weren't, that you would, I mean, I, and I'm not telling you where I'm at. I'm just saying, I'm just, I just, and, and I mean, it's a rule of debate. But I mean, again, you know, you know, I hear this argument all the time, you know, it's a violation of my rights. Well, I'm a big believer in people's rights and when they start violating a lot of other people's rights. You know, people don't have the rights to violate other, but, but again, this is, I mean, a discussion. I just want to make sure that we move forward as a council. We, we can get into having in-person meetings and, and that's the main goal. That is my main goal is to get us sitting down at that table right there, having our town council meetings. And it's all staying healthy to continue to have meetings. And, and, and I would hope that out of, out of respect for anybody, that we would, we would do what is right. That's all. So, and I would hate to have to assume that someone's doing it right. I mean.
I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear Attorney Scipole's thought on this, on the legal aspect of it.
I have just been following the governor's executive orders when it comes to COVID meetings. I don't know that I have much to add to the conversation about wearing masks or not.
Well, Council Marvel is saying that we should go talk to the town manager or the town clerk and let us know if, who is vaccinated and who isn't. And I think that's kind of really stepping into someone's personal business. Because say if me and Scott don't, me and Scott don't show up for meetings, what does that say? Or say Counselor Davis doesn't show up. That's kind of singling somebody out, wouldn't you say? And that opens up a legal aspect in my eyes.
Well, there are, there's the Rhode Island Healthcare Confidentiality Act and the federal HIPAA regulations that generally protect people's confidential health information. And generally, that would apply to medical records. I don't know how that exactly would apply here. But I do think generally it is something people are entitled to keep private.
But then again, the town hall isn't Stop and Shop. You know what I'm saying? It's not a place where, you know, I mean, that's, you know, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't have the choice of, of, of not sitting next to, to, to anybody that I was concerned whether or not. So for me to, to, to potentially be forced to sit next to somebody that I had a questions about their potential, you know, whatever. Again, I, I could care less if you're vaccinated or not. That's, it is what it is. I would just hope that A, the right thing is done. But then again, so, so we're going to have, so we're going to have in-person meetings. You want us to, and again, I agree we should have in-person meetings, but you want us to have in-person meetings, but you would want me to force me to potentially have to sit down next to someone that's, that's not vaccinated? I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, I get it. I get it. I mean, I get your, your stance. I understand where you're coming from 100%. But I just think we as a council should have some sort of protocol. I don't necessarily need to know that you two are vaccinated. I just need to know that you have everyone's best interest and not just yours. That's all. That's, and, and I think that's a completely fair statement. So, you know, the fact that we are going to. So, you know, the fact that we are going to have to go into open meetings, we're, we're gonna have to have th- that discussion on protocol. Uh, Solicitor Seipol, do you think it would be a good idea to have some sort of, uh, protocol as far as how we handle the, the meetings instead of just lea- letting it be wide opening and, and leaving a huge room for interpretation as far as what we require? I mean, again.
It would be, uh, I think it would be advisable for, uh, you know, for there to be a plan in place and agreed upon beforehand. I'm not sure what other towns are doing. I mean, I've, all I've done is just followed the, the, uh, direction that comes from the governor's office. And, um, you know, I, this, like, wearing masks or not and what the rules should be, uh, is not something that I've, uh, researched my, myself yet, or I, I found out what other towns do, but we could certainly, I could work with the, um, town manager and the clerk and try to find, you know, what we would recommend for that.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think, uh, before our next meeting, we need to, uh, kind of, uh, and, and this isn't necessarily directed at, at you, uh, Mr. Seipol, but I just think as, um, as a town, we need to gather that information before our next meeting. So we can come up with, with something, because again, I want to get back to in-person means. I want everybody to feel comfortable being there. That's my main concern. So, um, so.
Uh, I mean, my, I don't, it, it seems to me that the situation right now, and I'm, I'm out and about in the city, you know, uh, here in Providence and, and it seems to be, uh, you know, the honor system. Basically, um, you know, folks, I mostly are, I would say, not wearing masks, uh, that I can see. Lately, you know, at the, the mall or out to eat or whatever, and, um, you know, but some people are, and I, I think it's, it's, I don't know that any of that is really, I mean, most of the businesses I visited have had a sign up that say something like, you know, if you're vaccinated, that it's your choice to, to not wear a mask and that's fine. Um, but I, I do agree that we should have, you know, a policy and, and, uh, stick to that and have it ready in advance before we return to the in-person meetings, just so that whatever the policy is that everybody's on the same page and it's not, uh, be ashamed to like waste time during a meeting, you know, having an argument with someone in the audience or something about wearing a mask, but we could say, here's the policy and then that's that. So, I mean, that's something that I could work on with, 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 uh, Mr. Rosso and, and, uh, and the town clerk and, and they know, I see what other towns have been doing and, and, you know, get some ideas for that.
Well, let me, let me jump in real quick, Steve. Here's the thing, I mean, with the, with the Charahoe School Committee meeting last week, whether you regardless, if you were vaccinated or you had a car, you didn't even have a car, you had to have a mask when you went in, okay? It's just like anything, if you don't feel comfortable or you're not unsure of it, wear a mask. It's, it's, it's common sense. There you go. That's all I'm gonna say.
Marvel here, I just wanna, I just wanna point out that my, my comment was not for the general public. My comment was for the council and the towns, uh, representatives because we are in close proximity. We do, uh, a lot of talking for discussion. And I think that, you know, we have to, you know, consider that a special case. We, we can say to the general public, you know, we, we encourage you to wear masks. Uh, you know, i- if you're not vaccinated, or if you aren't vaccinated, you don't have to wear masks. But that's, that's the general public. And we are a special case because like I said, we are in close proximity. We're sitting all together at a table. And I think that it's the prudent thing to do. I think it's the responsible thing to do. And that's all I'll say.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I, Lisa, you know, when we, when we had the swearing in, where we had the old council and we had the new council, and we had those, um, plexiglass things and we were, um, separated around the room somewhat, um, do you think that that helped?
Um, at the time, it probably did because we didn't have a vaccine either. So the people who have, um, gone in and have had their vaccinations are probably feeling a little more comfortable is my assumption. But even though people have been vaccinated and in the office, we are continuing to wear masks. I, I, okay, that's just a per- like, it's my personal preference. Um, when people come in, I, I think that that new variant is very catchy. And I think if you're vaccinated, it doesn't matter. You're gonna potentially catch it anyway. But, I, you know, if that's something, if the, the plexiglass shields are something that we can employ, that's, you know, a consideration, we still have them, so. I, there are, there are, if this is something that's gonna have to be discussed and we'll have to decide on some sort of a, um, you know, operating regulations or, or something, rules of procedure, I, it, you know, it's gonna be touchy, obviously. There are people who believe one thing or another and nobody wants to be forced to do anything that they don't want to do. And it's a, a ticklish subject.
But the office is still, it's volunteer?
In the office, we're still asking, we're still asking people who are coming in to wear their masks. Everybody, most everybody's been compliant. We have a small office. And we're, we're still taking appointments in Land Evidence area. We're allowing two people in at a time. I, I think that we, it's reasonable. Everybody's been very accommodating. And, um, but at some point, you know, we, we all are gonna have to get back to normal when that point is, is up for debate.
I agree.
Well, I'll be wearing my mask. Okay, I'll be wearing my mask. And, and I am vaccinated. I don't care. Anybody can know that I'm vaccinated, but I will wear my mask, period.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, Sharon. So with that being said, it sounds like, uh, we'll, uh, we'll task Brian with a couple of things here to, to kind of see what other places are doing and how they're working around it, instead of us trying to re- reinvent the wheel with it. Um, I think that's probably the best direction to go. So, uh, with that being said, unless there's any other, uh, discussions or anything like that, I'd like to move on to the next topic. Any objections? Okay, not hearing any. Up next, discussion regarding improving the dissemination of information to encourage participation in local budget referendum events sponsored or, or, um, this was brought to the agenda by Council Marvel.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I, I think I can probably speak for all council members, uh, when I say that I was really disappointed at the low turnout on the budget vote in fact that, um, the budget that we all worked so hard on, uh, getting, getting through, uh, was rejected by less than a hundred people in town. Um, I think that, um, we have, um, not done a very good job of getting the word out to residents that the, um, that the vote was happening or even, you know, uh, more information about the budget. And when I say we, I, I kind of put it on us on the town council that we, we really should have been pushing more, uh, to get more information out to the town. So I'm gonna say I own that. We, we should own that and, and, uh, you know, kind of see how we can do better, uh, next time. Um, I know we have a lot of, uh, various ways to communicate to folks and some of them work and some of them don't work. Um, I know my, my very unscientific social media poll, I asked about, you know, robo calls because that's the only way that I was informed, um, o- other than being on the town council. Um, and a lot of people responded basically saying that they either did not get the robo call, um, got it, uh, but didn't answer, so it went to voicemail. Um, and otherwise, you know, didn't, didn't hear it until after the vote. So, um, I know in addition to, I know in addition to robo call, we have, we have Code Red, which I don't know if that's, you know, reserved for emergencies. Um, you know, we have social media, we have a, uh, a town, an official town, um, presence on Facebook. I don't know if we have Twitter, maybe, you know, we want to consider that. Uh, the town website we have, um, but I think that really, when it comes down to something as important as the budget vote, I think that at the very least, after the, the financial town meeting, we should put together a one or two-page letter that summarizes what our budget is that we're proposing uh, and provides some detailed information about, you know, what we're doing with the budget, why we did it. You know, what, what did we, you know, try and do to, to keep it, you know, keep it at, at where it was? Um, and then provide information to people, um, on where and when to go vote and, and ask them to vote because it is important. And that mailing should go out to all residents, um, you know, in town. And then we, we can follow up with robo calls and, you know, newspaper articles and, and, you know, things on the town website. Uh, but I think that, um, we, we have some things that we need to do to reach out to residents and, and get more involvement, get, get them to be more aware of, uh, of what's going on in town. So I've kind of put together, you know, my own notes. I've kind of put together a to-do list. Um, I would like to, uh, I, I'm happy to, uh, you know, follow up on, on these items with, uh, with Brian and, and perhaps with, uh, with Jeff Renette. Um, but I think that we, we really should, you know, focus on thinking about a, a paper letter that goes out to all residents after the financial town meeting, uh, with budget information.
Well, I, I have some comments. First of all, every member of the town council, including myself, you know, write one letter to the editor in the paper. Not that everybody reads the newspaper, so every single member, the five of us, never wrote one letter defending the town budget. And that's a fact. So why don't we get that out there first? And also, uh, I believe in bulk mailing. And that idea is predicated on what the Secretary of State does on referenda. Uh, robo calls, people change their phone numbers. Not everybody registers. If you get a piece of mail saying there's a vote, the town should have a bulk mailing permit. They should use it to advise people, whether it's on the Charahoe vote, the town vote, uh, any recreation or any town things that we think should go out to the public. And that should be used. Uh, at least people will look at it before they throw it away. People do miss phone calls, but usually people do look at their mail. Bulk mailing is the way to go. In addition to that, uh, this town council, with all due respect, needs to be more politically sophisticated. Specifically, uh, the people of this town aren't too happy. They overwhelmingly rejected the Charahoe budget and they're really concerned about spending. Uh, the Charahoe budget was, uh, defeated in this town. So it shouldn't be no surprise that the Hopkins budget was rejected. Uh, and I would suspect any building proposal in the future, Charahoe's got a tough sledding in this town because people on, in the mood of spending money. And I think that you gotta be politically sophisticated enough to realize and follow the votes and consider what those votes me- mean. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, it's, Brian, it's Mike. Maybe you can answer my question for you. When I looked on the, not the town site that has the picture of, you know, the picture of, or the, the town site for town hall, but who does the Facebook updates for the town? Cause when I looked, there was some updates, town co- town council be, uh, town hall be closed, but the last real update was April second. Is that the IT guy? Do we estimate it specifically sits there every day and updates it? Hey, at two o'clock, this is gonna happen on this. I mean, I think that's a good way to also get the word out.
So the face, the town Facebook page, uh, this is Brian Rosso, um, acting town manager. Um, so the Facebook page was, it was not posted. Previously, the Facebook page was started by the secretary, the town manager's secretary. And it was updated by the town manager's secretary, who has since left the town. Um, so she left her credentials to the IT director and, and I don't think it was really stressed to him the importance of using that because historically it was not active at all until the solar stuff came up. You know, once the solar issues arise, then I guess people started using it as a platform. Prior to that, it wa- there was barely any activity on it. So it wasn't high on the priority list as far as correspondence go. Um, you know, but as far as the notifying the public, we put this three posts in the Westley Sun. We posted at seven locations around town, um, including the libraries. We did a robo call. Um, we posted it on the town website. You know, we didn't put it on the Facebook page, but other than that, we've, we put signs up around town and Lisa can, can, um, probably give you more details on this because she's heavily involved with, you know, getting those, uh, that correspondence out. But, I mean, yeah, I, in my opinion, I, I think we've, we did a so- a very good job of, an adequate job of getting that information out. Um, and if people aren't paying attention, they're not paying attention. You know, I hate to say it, I was as disappointed as anybody that the budget didn't get passed. Um, and I think it's, y- you know, somewhat embarrassing, the, the voter turnout. Uh, we definitely want to increase that by any means possible, but, you know, I, I, I just have a tough time, um, putting that onus on the town because, you know, it's in the Westley Sun. It's on the town website. We've did a robo call. I mean, these, certainly the Facebook page needs to be incorporated, but absent of that, I, I think we did every other means we could think of to get the word out there.
I mean, I'm not, no, Brian, I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger or being negative. I'm just trying to say, who is doing the Facebook page and maybe we can get that back into play. If, if Jeff can do it, or maybe we can have somebody come in and do it a couple hours a week or something. I don't know. Just, it seems like if you look at like Wesley's, Wesley's Facebook page, yeah, it's updated every day. You know, stuff goes on, what's going on? Hey, this is coming up, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, like I've always said, I don't, I'm not worried about what other towns do. I'm worried about what we do. But a lot of people click on, hey, you have a new, you know, there's a new post on Facebook from Hopton Town Hall. Oh yeah, by the way, there's a vote coming up. You know, stuff like that.
And this is Council Moffett here, a- and I would like to kind of echo what Brian was just saying here. Um, you know, a- a- out of the people that voted down the budget, the, not one of them showed up at a, at a town budget meeting. Not one of them showed up at the town refer- at the budget referendum either. I mean, and i- i- it's the same time every year, every year. Everybody pays taxes in this town. Tax bill, they know, when, I mean, we do need to spread the, the information, but at, at the same time, I mean, there was no participation in our town budget. There was nobody there suggesting ways how to cut the budget or what we should do with the budget. I mean, that would be nice too, you know what I mean? To, to just have that presence, you know, people who are con- concerned enough to come out to vote down the budget, but not concerned enough to, to make suggestions or contr- you know, contribute to it. I mean, that's, I mean, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I mean, that's just kind of where it comes down to. And, I mean, not for nothing, I mean, it's, it's kind of historically been, been low. Scott, I mean, are town budgets historically low turnout? I mean, we had more people turn out for the school budget.
The, the turnouts have never been really big unless there's really a hot item or there's like a, a massive tax increase. But the, the problem is you've got to have, you have a read on what voters think. And they tremendously vote against the Charahoe budget. People are concerned about taxes. The people are not happy in this town. I hear it all the time. And politicians talk too much and don't, they need to listen more. You could see that coming with, uh, the situation in, in the budget vote. People of this town are very leery of, of money right now. And Hopkins has always been conservative with money and the school proposal, they're gonna probably shoot that down.
How many people, Scott, do you think actually looked at the budget before voting it down? You know, I mean, agree. I mean, I, I don't want to get off topic here. I, I, I do think the suggestions that, that Council Marvel made were, were a very good start, you know, as far as disseminating in information. I really like Scott's idea on the bulk mailing. I think that is something that, that the town sh- should have. We should be able to, to do those types of things.
That I suggest is based on what the Secretary of State does on referenda. Not every, everybody reads their mail, even if they. Not every, everybody reads their mail, even if they, they read it to throw it away and something like that will. He, that's the best way to reach people. Uh, people's phone number changes, uh, not everybody registers, but everybody gets their mail, or at least goes through it.
Yeah, I mean, how many people have a home phone?
Oh no, absolutely. Um, Council Marvel, you have your hand up here?
Yeah, so, so a couple of, a couple of points I want to make. Um, first, I want to echo, you know, what Scott said about. Um, you know, the newspapers, I, I, I fully agree that we should have, um. Put an article in, in the newspaper. Um, I think that if we do that bulk mailing, as I mentioned, you know, with the summary of the. Of the town budget and, and some, some verbiage on, you know, why we think it's a good thing and, you know. Why we did what we did. That could just translate right to a, you know, a newspaper article. You know, that's submitted to the newspaper by the town council, all of us, all at once. Uh, so, you know, that, that could take care of that, you know, that newspaper article. Um, you know, second thing, um, I want to kind of touch on what Mike said is I, I don't think. I think in this, in this day and age, I know there are still a lot of people that are afraid of technology or, or, you know, it's just not. Not technology savvy, but there are. A ton of people who follow Facebook. And I, I think we, we cannot underscore now. The power of being able to post something on our Facebook page. Um, and, and get a lot of people. You know, seeing it and, and, you know, reacting to it. So I, I think that it, it is definitely worth. Looking at, you know, finding out how can we. You know, have somebody maintain the Facebook site? How, you know, can, can we use Twitter? A lot of people use Twitter, um, you know, can we, can we do that? And then, you know, with the, the only other point I want to make is another idea that I have here is. I think that this could all start. With a flyer that goes into everyone's tax bill. Whenever the tax bills go out, that basically, you know. You know, maybe, maybe it doesn't talk about the budget specifically, but maybe it, it lays out. You know, please, here's, here's our town website, here's our Facebook page, here's our Twitter page, here's how you contact. Counselors, here's our calendar, how you can get to our calendar. Please get involved, please pay attention. You know, and, and we can, we can provide some. You know, very high level, important pieces of information to residents. At that time with that flyer, because everybody's gonna open that up and read it. Um, and it's something they can, you know, pin up on their, on their refrigerator and, and keep it. So, just some ideas I, I've got.
Thank you. Okay. Not hearing any other discussion on this, I think we'll set this and possibly bring it back up for some, some old business. On, um, just to kind of see any, um, any, any progress that we do make on it. Um, I think it's important. Um, up next is number three, discuss and consider requests for a street light from the state for pole. Number three eighty-eight or pole three eighty-nine on Route three. Near the French Village vicinity to improve lighting in the area. Uh, this is brought to the agenda by Council Hurst.
Steve, is all right if I have Chief Palmer and Dave Caswell come up here and sit with us?
Absolutely.
Some information for us to.
Absolutely.
Yes, come on.
Your background in this, uh. Bob Delinis, uh. Has been, spoke to me for a while about, uh. The lighting, uh, I think polls at three eighty-eight is probably the best place to have a light and not three eighty-nine, but I have. Few decide a few times. And it's, uh, just coming into the town of Hopkin and from Meeting House Bridge. And that area is very dark and it would seem that, uh. It should be lighted, especially since it's the beginning of the town and, uh. It'd be a good place to have a light and I know there's a procedure to get lights. It is a state road, uh, Route three is a state road, but, uh. I, uh, would like to have a discussion on that and I believe that we have that. Procedure is we ask the state for a lighter. And I don't know if Brian has any background on how we approach that or either, uh. Our chief of police or Dave Caswell, head of our Public Works Department, has any comment on that?
Sure, yeah, I can speak to that. I, I know in the past, I mean, the, the general procedure would be someone would contact the town manager's office. And then I would reach out to Dave, uh, Chief Palmer, um, and, uh, Dave Caswell and, and. In the past, the chief would send out a patrolman, kind of check out the area, see if it actually warranted. A light, if he thought it was gonna be, um, hazard. Uh, to residents and then report back to the town manager and then. Um, you know, they would make a decision and also public works input as well as far as plowing goes and. And just make sure that there wasn't a safety issue. And then we would take it from there. If we reached out to Rhode Island DOT, um, if it was a town road, a- actually, this just happened about a month ago. Um, and we put a white, two lights in actually. Um, on town roads because there was a, a floodlight that was no longer maintained by National Grid. And we, the, the chief thought that it was hazardous to residents at night, so we, we. Addressed it and put in two streetlights. Um, so yeah, I, I think on a state road. Certainly Rhode Island DOT would have to get involved, would have to call up our, our contacts there and make a request. Um, but, uh, that's my two cents. I'll let the, the chief and Dave, um, speak to any. Experience they have with similar situations with state roads if they have any.
Chief David Palmer, uh, Brian, you took the words right out of my mouth, uh. Uh, on number four, I'll probably be calling the, uh, State Traffic Commission anyways. Um, I'll send out a police officer tonight, see if we'd, uh, be beneficial. Have a light there. Uh, kind of coordinate in with number four, so, uh, we'll do that. And if they think it's a, uh, um, suitable spot to have a light, they'll put one up and I'll go back to you on it.
Oh, you know, all I, all I would say is I, uh, I do want to talk about number four, but. That area, uh, coming into Hopkinton, uh. From Wesley out of Meeting House Bridge, that it was a dark area. That, uh, the pole area is just before the car dealership, which is the other side of the road. And, uh. It is, uh, tend to be dark, uh, at night and, uh. It is, Route three is, uh, like the main road in town, unless you. Consider ninety-one or, uh, one thirty-eight in the northern part of town or two sixteen. Uh, but nonetheless, they're, they're greatly traveled roads in town and of course Woodville Alton Road too. Used by a lot of people. So where were we going to go with this? We're gonna have like a report or some type of decision made on the poll or how we're gonna proceed?
Uh, when I speak to Steve Prestauer, who is my contact person up at DOT. I'll explain them to him the situation. First, I'm gonna have the police officer check it to see if he thinks it's beneficial to do so. Um, many times there's lights. At the next pole and we're aware they're not gonna put. Lights on every pole that they have, but if they think it's beneficial, yes, that's, that would be my next step.
Okay, can we, um, talk about number four because that's slightly different?
Sure.
Okay, uh, do, does anybody else have anything on, uh, tree before we go to four?
Uh, Councilman Hurst, I, I would just, uh, suggest that this is something that, um, we could handle, uh, internally, uh, operationally. Um, where we could report back in the, in, say like the, um. The town managers report to the council, but this is something I, I think could be. Addressed, you know, via an email to the town manager and then we can certainly get the chief and, uh, Mr. Palmer. Um, I mean, Chief Palmer and Mr. Caswell involved and, and handle it, um, so that we don't. Take up the council's valuable time, um, on these type of matters and we could always just report in the town managers' report. As opposed to, to making it, uh, an agenda item. But that's just a suggestion.
Well, I would like to point out to the public that Roger Perry, who I've known all my life. Suggested that and he's on the DM committee and, uh. It's a very, uh, important road because we were concerned about, I know, truck traffic. In that area, uh, and, uh. Also, I think, uh, off the topic, I would. If we're, we're doing this as far as traffic lights on the Ashway section of town, there's other areas that I would like to be looked at. Uh, specifically, uh, Maxon Street and Chase Hill Road near the post office. Uh, over near Crandall Corner where there's almost a. A hallway intersection from, uh, Route two sixteen. Uh, that area and also across from Maxon Hill Road and, uh, the shopping center in Ashway, all those areas, uh. Uh, possibly areas that we could have a serious accident or. I'm concerned about traffic in those areas. Uh, I know it's off topic from what's advertised, but since we're. Talking about lights, it's within the ballpark, so I would. Hope that some consideration is given to those areas as far as lighting and, and what's appropriate and what's not. And I would thank the chief of police for being here tonight and the head of the highway department, Dave Caswell, thank you.
So, so up, up next we have number four and it's gonna be discussed, consider. A traffic situation at Chase Hill Road and Route three intersection, including consideration of a traffic light. Is there any more discussion on that or, I mean, I know we were talking about the light here, but this is a completely different ballgame adding a stoplight.
Well, I will, uh. Apologize for going off topic, but since we're, uh, talking about roads instead of, uh. I will, uh. Send you an email, Brian, if you want, wish me to do it that way and say some of the, the roads in, in the Ashway section that I would like the lights looked at and. Maybe we can look at other sections of town, whole valley area and other sections of town. Uh, where maybe lighting, uh, or lights, uh, should be, uh, included. Thank you. I don't know, the chief, uh, has the accident reports and things of that nature and. Uh, Mr. Caswell knows about, uh, you know, the road design and those issues, but I think that. We certainly know, uh, certain places in Ashway like Egypt Street, uh, where it goes into Diamond Hill Road. Uh, you have to virtually pull out to, uh, to see if a car is coming and there's certain areas in town. That you, you have to virtually pull out to check traffic. Thank you.
Council Moffett. When, when I was first approached by this by Council Hurst, we talked about it and Chief Palmer was, was nice to step in.
I can't hear.
Chief Palmer was nice enough to give me a call and. Say there was a traffic study done on this. I'd like, you know, for the benefit of us all, seeing how we're fairly new to the council, I'd love to hear the chief talk about. The study that was done on this particular. Excellent.
Thank you, counselor.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything that Mr. Gary said.
I'll kind of repeat a little bit of what Mr. Gary said is, uh, I had called Mr. Gary earlier in the. Uh, day when I saw that this was on the agenda, uh, number four. Uh, there was a study done from the State Traffic Commission, uh, back in two thousand nineteen. Kind of give you a history of that, uh, Representative Kennedy had received a complaint back in July of two thousand nineteen. Uh, he contacted myself and, uh, DOT. Um, we coordinated, I, I spoke to Steve Prestow up at DOT. Asked him to do a study there, uh, at Chase Hill at Main Street. Uh, he had previously done one, uh, at two sixteen at Route three and it was very comprehensive. Uh, this one here, he did in, uh. In December and I can read some of what, uh, what the state commission, uh, came out with. And they had met on December fourth, two thousand nineteen, so you're, you're talking about a year and a half ago. And it states, uh, it's easier for me to read, so you get a verbatim, uh, a traffic study was performed. For the study area including speed dr- data, traffic volumes, crash data and sight distance. Uh, based on the study, the following was determined. Traffic volumes and crash data do not justify either installation of a traffic signal. Or flashing beacon at the intersection, therefore the request for flashing beacon was not approved. Uh, to address concerns about safety at that intersection, it was recommended and approved to add warning signs. In an additional stop sign on Chase Hill Road. The additional signs will be installed by the RIDOT Highway and Bridge Maintenance Division in the next several weeks. And that was done, uh, what, what they did at ERAC was a brand new stop sign, uh, coming out of Chase Hill. So it was much more visible. They also put another sign. Uh, approximately a hundred yards before that showing a, a stop ahead. They put two signs on either side of Chase Hill on Route three, showing that there's an intersection there. And, uh, actually Dave Caswell with DPW went out there. Uh, on Chase Hill and put out a sign that says stay in lane. Uh, clearly some issues at that location. Uh, the speed limit through there is twenty-five miles an hour, um, so. On the police part. We have, did a little bit of research on it was. Uh, we've done, stopped a hundred and ten vehicles, uh, from zero to a hundred and twenty on Main Street. Quite a, quite a, um, good traffic enforcement at that location. We've also had the, the speed sign out there. Uh, probably about se- six or seven times during that period of time to try and get the traffic to slow down. Uh, but when I heard about this, I, I took a ride out there and I saw that the two intersection signs that they have there. Um, just show an intersection sign. Uh, my thought pattern was to try and help improve that is. To ask the DOT to see if they can put up a, a sign that may be a. A little bit more strongly worded, uh, and I would, um, I would speak to Steve Prestow about that. He's pretty. He's pretty responsive. Uh, the good thing is we wouldn't have to go back to the traffic commission because the sign has already been, uh, okayed for that. So, and the other thing what we could do is actually put out our traffic sign instead of looking at it, at the speed of it is to. Put a, a message board on there saying dangerous intersection. And we recognize that's a difficult intersection there, the, especially with the traffic, uh, the tractor trailer trucks coming out of there. In the traffic, the traffic that's going by there. It's really a difficult turn, whether you're going north or south onto Route three, so. Um, but unfortunately, you're kind of stuck with what you have there. The geography is very difficult. So, it's something that we can do, uh, to help improve it. We'll continue with the police department to do traffic enforcement that, at that location.
I would, uh, take this time to thank the chief. I did send him. Well, I sent Brian an email with cur- uh, courtesy copy to the chief. Yeah, about, uh, traffic speeding in a, a place in Ho Valley and he said that the speed sign would be up there soon, so I thanked the chief publicly for that. Thank you, chief.
Uh, just to, uh, uh, just to expound a little bit about, uh, uh. The, uh, Maxon Hill. Location as well, we have, I believe there's a, uh, traffic study on that as well, but I wasn't sure you were gonna bring it up today, so. I'd have to review that, um, but I believe it was very similar.
Well, I, uh, veered off topic, but, uh, you know, you end up talking about all different places, uh. That you're familiar with and I brought it up because Roger Perry mentioned it to me and then I think of all these other places, uh, growing up in Ashway. Uh, you know, the traffic situation, Maxon Street, we have a church, the post office. Oak Street is a busy street, uh, across Route two sixteen, uh, it's not perfect, but, uh, Crandall's Corner also. Over near where you have Maxon Hill Road, you have Cemetery Lane and then you have, uh, the shopping center, so that area is. A lot of going on right there. So these things of course enter your mind. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Uh, I think, I, uh, but Brian, I don't think that, I, I agree with the chief here on that. I mean, I don't think it's, it's. I don't think the state is gonna go ahead and put a, uh, traffic light there. My question to Director Caswell would be. Is maybe what they. would be is maybe what they did on two sixteen by Pete's Grocery and again, up at the end of two sixteen, they put something in the in the middle of the road, stop ahead, something like that. Maybe that'd be more feasible than trying to put a traffic light or something like that. Dave, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, there's other alternatives. Dave Caswell, Public Works. Yes, counsel, there are other alternatives to the street light. And signage, as the chief said, was was one of the fixes for that. You can either paint in the road.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And and or edge of the road signage. So and again, that would have to be all approved through the DOT, which Chief Palmer has contacts with, so.
Excellent.
That work for you there, Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, I try to be serve the public and they have comments and my own thoughts. And that's what representative democracy is about. So I have no other further comments. But I try to listen to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Chief Palmer for being here and Mr. Caswell as well. Thank you very much for your participation.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you.
All right, up next.
What's your name again?
Up next on the agenda is boards and commission. Discuss, consider and possibly vote to reappoint Mary Carlson to the Affordable Housing Partnership.
Mr. President, gives me a great pleasure to make a motion to reappoint Mary Carlson to Affordable Housing Partnership.
And Steve?
Yes, yes, Sharon.
That was the, I've been on the Affordable Housing Partnership with Mary Carlson and I also support her. So I would second that motion.
Okay, all right. With a motion made and a second, I'd like to go, all in favor?
Hurst, aye. Gary, one hundred percent.
Harvey, aye.
And Moffat, aye. Motion passes. Mary Carlson is reappointed to the Affordable Housing Partnership. Thank you, Ms. Carlson, for your for your volunteerism and your concern and action on this committee. Thank you. All right, up next, we have the public forum. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are calling, please raise your hand by hitting star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Okay, up first here. Believe it's Mr. Moreau. Could you just state your name for the record, Mr. Moreau?
Hi, this is Joe Moreau. I just want to mention that to Counselor Hurst that I just sent him an email with Gina Fuller's phone number on there. If anyone else would like your phone number, you can just email me. I certainly will respond to you. Before I get started, I want to mention most of you are aware that most of my career was in retail, human resources. This is a very slippery slope when you start asking if someone has been vaccinated. I understand the issues with sitting close together. You may need to spread out. I'm vaccinated. I have been and my wife for several months. I go to Cumberland Farms every day and I wear my mask. I noticed the sign in one of the stores and it said, if you are vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. If you are not vaccinated, we strongly suggest you wear a mask. I agree with Counselor Gary. This this really isn't anyone's business whether you're vaccinated or not. And I also agree with President Moffett that it's the right thing to do to wear a mask. What I want to talk about is basically for informational purposes only. I had commented at a previous council meeting on how difficult it has been to get answers to my questions recently. I had asked for a contact person for the Potter Hill Mill area a few weeks back before the committee was established. I wanted to share some information from a similar issue that was happening in Coventry at Johnson's Pond. One of my friends in Coventry, his daughter lives on Johnson's Pond and they're going through a similar situation. I finally forwarded some information to Chip Hile. I want to remind everyone on the council also, I went through the same process that our council did to become an elected official of our town. Recently, I've had to file a police report, file a complaint with the Ashway Postmaster, file a no trespass order against one individual with our police department. And I had to purchase a no trespass sign for my property. I'm also looking into purchasing a camera system. I asked for a sit down meeting as an elected official of our town. Brian Rosso got back to me a few days later after he had some time off. Brian asked me if the other person got back to me and I said, no. At that point, I told Brian that I was not, I was going to forget about trying to have this meeting. I had hoped that my email on May twenty first deserved a response from both parties. On June seventeenth, twenty one, I sent an email to six individuals concerning site visits at the Kamoli and Stone Ridge Projects. On June twenty seventh, I sent an email to four individuals concerning site visits. I will ask the same question again. Is Attorney Hogan getting paid to attend these site visits? I don't know how I can get an answer to this question. Can someone comment on that, please?
This is Counselor Moffat. I, Joe, I can only say that I have no clue. I don't know.
Okay, well, I appreciate your honesty, Steve, and I would hope that someone would check into it because our attorney Hogan attended a site visit for the Kamoli Project and for the Stone Ridge Project. And as the taxpayer of this town, I don't have any idea what the contract is like, but I'm sure that there are billable hours in there. Maybe Brian would know. If these hours are being used towards the billable hours, I don't think that's the right thing to do. On the other side, as I said, I don't know. She may not be getting paid. But I believe that the planning board solicitor is at the planning board meetings for legal opinions. And I don't understand the point about attention site visits. At the May twentieth, twenty first planning board meeting, certain individual said he was going to speak to the chair of the planning board and the chair of the council, and that was his words, not mine. He was concerned because I was stating true facts. You could start at four point two oh if you choose to do that. But my comments showed a pattern with this individual and this person has to be in control of certain things. It's awful funny when I look back at those dates that since this individual said he was going to notify these two individuals, I can't get answers to my questions or even a response to my emails. I discussed at two council meetings that it was time to start healing our town. The last two agendas under executive session had information that caught my attention. I won't get into any other details. But I have confirmed what I thought. I don't have all of the facts, but this is not the way to heal our town. People wonder why we can't get volunteers to serve on our boards and commissions. We have someone who has devoted over thirty years to our town and in a period of eight months, he's gone. I would not be surprised if the entire board resigns. In closing, I wanted to read something that a current council member stated during the elections of two thousand and twenty. This was a questionnaire that was titled Hopkinton, Rhode Island Key Development Topic. And I quote, "I am only interested in making Hopkinton a better place to live for everyone in the community and I will listen to ideas from anyone that brings them forward," end quote. And I agree with that statement. I have, as you know, I have complimented the town council several times. In fact, that started a letter that I had received in the mail. But I also believe that if you want residents to be involved, you need to respond to their questions. And that's all I really want to say because if we want to heal our town, we need to stop listening to someone who is, in my opinion, not productive and help the residents that need help. As a director of public welfare, and obviously I'm not going to get into any names, I am helping people that are having problems putting food on the table, paying their bills. And that's what we need to focus on. How can we help the residents of our town? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Up next. If your phone number ends in nine, five, nine, three, please state your name for the record.
This is Carolyn Light, forty-three, Forest Glen Drive, Hope Valley. Can you hear me?
Yes, Carolyn.
I wanted to comment on two agenda items tonight, the budget, participation and the virtual meeting. Question for you is how many people are actually participating in the season evening's meeting?
How many people, including, I will answer that question in one second. Including the, so nineteen, I mean, I'm sorry, fourteen at the current moment.
Okay. I hope that wasn't the peak for this evening, but regarding your discussion on budget participation and virtual meetings, this count that you have is probably a higher number than you would get at the town hall. So I don't think you have capacity issues there for seating people, even if you have to distance them a little bit. And our town council has always known when they might have a topic on the agenda that would call for a bigger venue and those meetings have always been held at the school. So when the state of Rhode Island says that virtual meetings are done for government, I don't think there should be any question about it because people have always find a way to get in to participate in a meeting in person. I think the quantity is a reflection of government engagement. And I can personally say I'm not blowing smoke up Scott's butt. But I'd like to say that there were an overwhelming number of communications that came from that one council member and they were everywhere you looked. They were on Facebook. They were in the Westerly Sun. They were in emails. If the town council is really concerned about getting participation in the budget format, I think it's your responsibility to make the community aware that there are budget discussions going on. This town council is not engaging with the community. I think you might want to listen to your meeting tonight and hear what the community might be listening to from an objective position. And I am going to piggyback on what Joe Moreau said about recruiting volunteers for boards and commissions. I've only been on the planning board for a couple of years, but I recognize good work when I look at the people that are on the boards and commissions that have served much of their professional lifetime in it. And I'll tell you this. If the if the word on the street is true that Harvey has been asked to resign, then I want to know who's going to raise their hands to clean up the cemeteries on the road that I live on. Who's going to be putting the flags up there? Because you're not just getting rid of somebody who who you perceive to be an issue. You have to participate in his meetings to say that. But you have to participate and know what his job truly is and what he does passionately. And if it's true that Harvey is no longer going to be running the Conservation Commission, I'll say this is yet another twenty one disappointment on behalf of the town council. I can't be proud to call this council mine. And this is no reflection on me as a planning board member at all, but I kind of feel obligated to say if you guys feel obligated to ask me to resign my position too, because you might object to the way I communicate, then so it be done. But it's on your back to recruit somebody to do those jobs the way they've been done until you came along. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, there's Joe or Mr. Moreau, I see your hand is still up. Did you have something else to say?
No, I do not. I'm sorry.
No worries. Is there anyone else in the public who would care to speak? If you're calling in with a phone, star nine to raise your hand. All right, I do not see any other hands. Do I do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, Counselor Hurst, I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Counselor President, Counselor Gary, I second.
All in favor?
Hurst, aye.
Davis, aye.
Harvey, aye.
And Moffat, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.
Good night.